I'll go ahead and call the May 20, 2021, meeting of the RTC Board of Commissioners to order. Maren, could you advise us who's calling in and who's present?
There we go. Sorry, a little technical difficulty. Yes, thank you, Mayor March, or Chair March as Chairwoman. For our board members who are calling in, if you would please confirm your attendance as I call out your name, Mayor Pro Tem Isaac Barone.
Present.
Thank you. We have the following present in the chambers. Mayor Pro Tem Stavros Anthony, Councilman George Galt, Mayor Carolyn Goodman, Vice Chair Justin Jones, Chairwoman Deborah March, Mayor Kiernan McManus, Commissioner Ticks Sagerblum. I'd also like to note that N.D. Deputy Director Cole Mortenson is here with us today, filling in for the N.D. Director and will provide the N.D. Director's report. With that, Madam Chairwoman, we have a quorum of members.
Thank you very much. And MJ, before we move forward, I'd just like to acknowledge that this is your special day, and we're so pleased to be here to celebrate with you. In fact, we scheduled this meeting around your birthday. So we want to wish you a very happy birthday and all the best in the coming year.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Maynard, I'll turn it over to you to proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, Chairman March. Members of the Commission, your first item is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
This is the first time set aside for public comment. This time is limited to comments included on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on a posted agenda item, now is your opportunity. Please come forward to the microphone to provide your name and comments. For the record, do we have any comments from the public on an agenda item? There's no one in the audience? Is there anyone that has posted or written in?
Madam Chairwoman, there are no written public comments at this time.
Thank you. So, next item.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. The next item is to approve the agenda. The agenda is in order and ready for your approval.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I approve the agenda.
We have a motion on the floor, all in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay, and that motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman. The next item is to receive the CEO report. To start, we'd like to recognize Officer Wesley Franklin from our contractor Marksmen, and Francis Julian will present.
Thank you, MJ. Today, we're here to celebrate and give a crystal bus to Wesley Franklin. Wesley actually joined Marksmen last October, right in the pandemic, and really rose to the rank, and is now part of the Community Relation Transit Team, or what we call the CRTT. In that team, officers are actually engaging with the public, helping them, and Wesley is doing an awesome job. He receives tons and tons of compliments each month, and is just doing an outstanding job, always is there. So let's go and surprise Wesley. Hi, I'm Francis Julian. I'm the Deputy CEO for the RTC, and I'm here to surprise you with a crystal bus, just to thank you for all the amazing work that you're doing on the CRTT team. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Keep up the amazing job. You're receiving always amazing comments.
Thank you.
Here you go.
Actually, I thought I was in trouble. My FTO came and got me. He told me that his boss told him to put a rush on it, so I thought I was done. Well, when I talk to the community, it basically, like when people having a bad day, when you just get that little extra conversation, it makes their day, and it makes their day go differently, you know? Some people can be having a good day, or some people can just be having a bad day, and when you walk up to them and say, "Hey, how you doing?" Or, "How's your day going?" It actually changes their day a little bit, and it makes me feel good to make them feel good. So it's like a win-win situation.
That's exactly right. He's a keeper.
I like your color-coordinated mask, by the way.
Sure. So May is National Bike Month, and this week we are celebrating Bike to Work Week, which runs from the 17th through the 21st. We are also proud to partner with the Southern Nevada Bicycle Coalition for the Ride Safe Campaign, raising safety awareness among our cycling community. And here's a quick clip of the kickoff press event.
The Ride Safe Campaign is really targeted at making sure that our cycling community, not only those of us who've been in it for a while, but all those who are joining right now, have all of the information so they can ride safely out on the roadways and enjoy the amazing opportunities that we have here in Southern Nevada.
These are all important for us, but particularly for cyclists as we get out on the road, because honestly, we're some of the most vulnerable users when we're out there.
And we had, I know we had a few. Commissioner Jones, I know, wrote into work today, and David swallowed it, so we appreciate and support the bicycling community. And finally, for the last item of your CEO report, I'd like to hand it over to Teresa Geiser. She's our Director of FAST, to introduce our Road to Zero program. But before I do, she's going to be introducing Noam Mattal, who is the CEO of Way Care. And we've been working with Noam and his company since 2017, and Noam's company has put our Traffic Management Center on the map internationally. He's been a wonderful partner. Also Lieutenant Arias with N.D. is here. We appreciate their partnership. And then, of course, Cole and the team at N.D. was also a part in this, so I'm going to turn it over to Teresa.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you so much, and good morning, everyone. The Road to Zero program was a collaborative effort between Nevada Highway Patrol, the RTC, and the Nevada Department of Transportation to use proactive police presence to reduce driver speeds around high-risk areas. This partner, the partner agencies work together with Way Care to determine specific locations of high risk for traffic incidents where taking preventive action could help reduce the risk of future crashes. Today, we have Noah Mattel, CEO of Way Care, and Lieutenant John Arias, Commercial Enforcement Commander of Nevada Highway Patrol's Southern Command, here to share the results of the program.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Board, and thank you, guys, for having us here. I have with me Lieutenant Arias as well, Noah Mattel, CEO of Way Care. Excited to be here today to share some of the results and the work that we've been doing as Teresa introduced. I've been working for many years now with RTC, using artificial intelligence to start shifting the conversation about how we think about traffic safety, and have some exciting results to share today as well. So a little bit of background on the program and how it evolved. It started really in 2018 with a pilot program that was just to lay the foundation. This is groundbreaking technology using predictive analytics in a field of artificial intelligence called deep learning to identify ahead of time where dynamically some of these risk areas are for crashes. But then also, of course, how do you start proactively allocating resources, whether it's from NHP side or from RTC FAST, to warn the public and the drivers so you change the circumstances rather than just mitigating a crash that already occurred? Pilot was successful, but it was a short, just a kind of test period. And based on that pilot, we were awarded a grant through the National Safety Council and Road to Zero to expand this across Southern Nevada and continue collaboration with Nevada Highway Patrol, RTC, and N.D. as well. And that program ran through 2020, from end of 2019 through 2020. Perhaps to give a brief overview of just the technical elements of how the program worked and the collaboration, I'll hand it over to Lieutenant Arias to talk a little bit about that, as he led that from the Nevada Highway Patrol side.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board members. Just to give you a quick, a little bit of a highlight, what we ended up doing is creating this partnership with N.D. and RTC, really focusing on how do we become more visual and how do we communicate to the public safer aspects of driving on the road in these high-crash corridor areas? The partnership with N.D. allowed us to build different, utilize engineering and design to provide a platform for police units to be positioned and to be looking at the public and to have high visibility by having their emergency lights activated. Further, we wanted to communicate with the public as they're approaching these sites by working with FAST and RTC with placing up signs on the freeway, so as their people are driving, they're seeing on the freeway, this police monitor ahead, reduce your speed, speed limit is 65. And then they see that sign again, and then they see the law enforcement aspect, creating a larger corridor effect of a platooning effect of the community going through that area. And then we were able to utilize the platform of Way Care to actually measure our results. Are we reducing crashes? Are we reducing speeds? And when we do reduce speeds, are we reducing the severity of the crashes that are occurring? The final outcome of what we want to accomplish is, are we changing the behavior? And that's what's really groundbreaking here. Are we changing the excessive speeding, or the heavy braking, or the last-second steering? Because all those are all elements that create crashes. So those are the great things that we're able to actually measure, quantify, and work together between agencies to be proactive in reducing crashes in our community.
And just to elaborate a bit on that, really, there's two things here that stand out, I would say nationally and even perhaps internationally. One, it's not just the use of artificial intelligence in the field around these topics, but also the collaboration element, which is very rare to be found on the platform layer between law enforcement agencies, traffic operation, N.D. on the construction side. All that kind of coming together was really an asset to be able to have here in Southern Nevada. Now, we ran this program, as I mentioned, for over a year, which gave us really robust data and results that we can rely on in the analysis as well. There were six corridors that were selected across US 95 and I-15. The primary sites is the one we focused on across I-15 and US 95. And as you can see, over 800 hours of activity, 300 STMSs, those are strategic traffic management sites, as you saw in the images, and over 15 NHP units that were involved in this. And so, again, really important when you do these studies, you want to have a robust dataset to be able to lean on the results. Now, from a safety perspective, we saw a realized an 18% reduction in primary crashes on this corridor, which is fantastic in terms of improvement. It is important to note all of this in a year, 2020, that saw the highest increase per mile driven across the nation since 1923, when they started measuring this data. So when we're in a year of increasing crashes and fatalities, we're actually able to bring impact here to reduce crashes across key corridors in Southern Nevada. Secondly, and equal as important, that Lieutenant mentioned, is being able to reduce the number of speeding drivers. One of the most highly correlated factors for severity and fatalities of a crash is the speed factor as well. And in those corridors, we were able to see that we were reducing speeding by over 43% for those that were going above the speed limit, very important factor, again, in reducing the number of fatalities across these key corridors.
One of the factors that I'd like to, can you go back to this slide? One of the factors that I do like to make sure that we consider in your view of this is that this was data that happened during COVID. We all know that traffic decreased, speeds increased, and the severity of accidents occurred. This data is comparable data from the same month period, from days that we did activate, that's the color in yellow for the crashes, compared to days in blue where our, we did activate. So we activated 10 times in a month, during Monday through Fridays, and then 10 times in a month, we didn't. And then we compared that data across each other. So to make it valid for the time period that we are involved in.
Very important to note that, so thank you. Typically, you look at year-over-year results. Of course, in these types of analysis, that would not be the appropriate measure here, given the change in behavior of drivers across 2020. So we had to take extra steps that were a little more complicated on the analysis to measure within each month, apples-to-apples behavior of a Monday when an STMS site was active versus a Monday when we did not have activity. And that allowed us to get to those results that are robust. Now, the interesting thing as well is when we looked at not just the safety measures, but correlating that to speeds as well, one of the things we really didn't have a preconceived notion on is how would this affect overall congestion in that corridor? The findings here are very interesting, and I'll try and kind of conceptualize. Some of them are somewhat technical as well. Overall, on speed limits, we saw the average speed drop by 3% from 62 to 60 miles per hour, and that is a small drop, but it's actually a positive finding, because what we're seeing is while we're reducing speed, it's not reducing it to a standstill, where people are seeing the police and, you know, just pressing on the brake and creating congestion. The ability to give visibility far away, use dynamic message signs upstream to note, to alert drivers, creates both a safe driving through the corridor, but also creates smoother driving experiences you're going through it. Second piece on the right, we compared standard deviation and distribution of driver speeds across activity times, so the STMS times, where there is preventative activity, versus non-preventative activity. And what you see here in this plot, this kind of histogram plot, is really interesting because overall distribution was condensed from what it was during non-STMS activities. What it means is that we're actually able to get more drivers in the same, driving in the same speed ranges, and that overall improves speed harmonization on the corridor. So to put simply, if someone's going 85 miles per hour and another person's going 25 miles per hour, and you've probably been in these situations on the road, someone will press the brake, then that, the other person presses the brake, and you start building that effect back and back. If you're able to bring people into the same speed ranges, someone's driving 50, someone's 45, that overall improves the throughput of that corridor. And so not only were we able to get some of the safety benefits, but actually see improvement on congestion management through these corridors as well. Finally, and really important, we wanted to measure this from an economics perspective and a cost-benefit analysis. And so using FHWA and USDOT metrics that estimate motor vehicle crashes and their cost, economic cost, we segmented this based on property damage, injury, and fatalities. In all the cases, taking kind of a lower-bound approach to be conservative, and then measure that up with DPS and Nevada Highway Patrol data on the severity and crash report for the year across these corridors to get the distribution of the crashes by severity, and match that up to the impact that we had, the 18% reduction that I talked about. You can see a program that was only 188,000 in terms of its funding, a 16x ROI return on investment, and over $3 million in economic benefit. And I think in terms of the overall benefit of using technology and how it scales, this speaks, I think, volume to that, where you're able to scale something across a state or region at a highly effective ROI for the community as well. Anything you'd like to add, Frank?
No, sir.
So I'll close with that, and again, I just will close with saying that the collaboration we found here is really what enabled all this, is being able to step forward and not be in the comfort zone and using new technologies to really advance and improve traffic safety here in Southern Nevada. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
I'm sorry, I have one last thing.
Sure.
I apologize. Up to now, we've talked about how we've prevented crashes and reducing, but the partnership that it's building with N.D. RTC and that interoperable communication with agencies is really what creates the foundations for our next moves, for how do we deal with major critical incidents, and we can set up a unified command of being able to mitigate resources, activities, operations, to help our communities out. So that is the next stage of our involvement in this area.
Thank you, Lieutenant, and thank you, Noam. Are there any questions?
I'm not clear. So this was a pilot. Have you stopped that, or did we go ahead and, because it was so significant, are we doing it full-time now, or what's going on?
Good question. The study, well, the program was an expansion onto the pilot. It ran through 2020, but it ended, the funding for it ended in January of this year. And we stopped the program and did the study in the last few months to be able to look at the results. We're already incorporating it in a few of the opportunities that will be coming in the, in the few coming months with ATC MTD grant, working with RTC, and a few others. So we'll be continuing to expand on this and then revisit how, obviously, not in my domain on that, but how we work together, RTC and Nevada Highway Patrol and N.D., to expand this across the region and the state as well.
I mean, it seems to me it's significant, statistically significant enough that it's kind of criminal not to go forward as fast as we can go, if we're talking about 20% reduction in...
Commissioner, so Way Care, actually, their platform, that is part of how we operate our Traffic Management Center daily, so they are embedded into how we, the team, we work directly on a continuous basis with not only Way Care and his team, but also Lieutenant Arias and his team. So this is part of what we do. I think in terms of Noam talking about identifying funding for specific pilots, that's really looking for a piece, let's say it's going to be a new area, a new freeway, identify new area. But this is, we, Dave, I'd ask you to expand on that, because you and your team, this is, again, part of our daily operations.
Yeah, so the, in particular, we have a number of items on the agenda specific to this, to even expanding it, and that, as I mentioned, is the ATC MTD grant, which I think is item 33 on the agenda. And so, yes, we're, the good thing about doing the pilots is we evaluate it, we see good results, and we're able to build upon that to expand it into other areas of the valley. And I, this, this is kind of part and parcel with what we've done with Way Care over the years, and I think what we'll continue to do going forward with our FAST team and our partners.
But again, it just seems like if you're making that kind of a difference, we ought to put more money, let's weigh it on the ground, let's just do it. I mean, whatever it takes, and you're talking about lives here, and so it's a pretty significant difference.
Agree. And I don't know, Noam or Lieutenant Arias, if you want to talk about how we are currently operating, some of the things that you're doing that daily are saving, saving lives and reducing incidents.
Yeah, I can talk a bit to the, so today, the operating system in FAST that we're working in partnership as well is not just focused on the proactive prevention, but also on the mitigation side, which is equally as important, saving lives. And so we're using our system and artificial intelligence for automated incident detection. So changing the process of identifying incidents from one that's a manual one, relying on that 911 call alone, to using a more contextual understanding of changes in the environment to identify the incident and start the response earlier. In Nevada, we've been able to see, or in Southern Nevada, we've been able to see a nine-minute improvement in incident identification time and the response times that flow to that. And that's something that's operational in use. But I think your point is well-taken in terms of the discussions that we're having actively together with our partners on how do you actually expand this and take it even beyond what we're doing today, which with, which is the STMS sites, the strategic traffic management sites, and making it more dynamic for freeways, but also even arterials as well, which is another discussion as well. Fatalities don't discriminate just freeways versus arterials, and they happen in both areas.
Thank you. Yes, the report's fabulous. It's wonderful. I think it's great, the collaboration. I always look to funding. And so ultimately, are there any projections? I know from Charleston to, well, to Tropicana, actually, all the speed control elements that are there for the data to control us as we're driving. So it's very effective. It seems very reasonable. But as you look at the cost of putting up those technological database boards, are you projecting for a half-mile, three-miles, whatever all that is, and then where is that money going to come from?
Yeah, and just a clarification on that. So Way Care is an infrastructure-less company in that regard. So our component, our core technology that we're enabling is the artificial intelligence.
Right.
In fact, we're just joking that we should maybe come to meetings with the box that is a Way Care AI box. So the gantry systems and the messaging is separate, a component in terms of funding. We're not limited to the infrastructure alone, though it helps, of course, to have the dynamic message signs. The corridors and the segment lengths we look at are a mile stretch in terms of the data, and it really can even vary shorter than that. It's a dependency on the volume of traffic on a corridor, and when it becomes significant enough for AI to be able to analyze it. So if you have two cars, it's hard to draw a conclusion moving forward. If you have 100 or thousands of cars, that's enough of a sample size. And that, of course, is going to vary if you take I-15 versus, you know, another Boulder Highway or somewhere else.
So the only thing is, are there and will there be estimates for whatever duration? I mean, you're in the fun part of the data, because without data, we have nothing. I mean, your favorite sign. And so, but as you go to implement, there has to be, and do those come out of the study ultimately that you will be giving us? Then it goes to which body will move forward to go to the legislature, whether it's fuel tax, how are we going to pay for this? As you keep doing so beautifully what you're doing, now comes the time for the results and putting it in place, which means capital.
Yeah, and I would leave comments for that, of course, to RTC and now for Way Care. I think the one thing I'm going to add is, we are working with RTC, and RTC is at the forefront of this, of thinking a little differently, even about infrastructure alone. Some of the data that's informing our decision based on the AI side is using connected vehicle data, and so actually looking at data coming from the vehicles, and I like to say we use them as virtual infrastructure. The unit economics of that are fantastic in terms of how you scale that, much better than how much you'd spend on just one kind of infrastructure system alone. And so that's a component that, right now, is substituting the data part as well.
Wow, that's just a whole nother. It's all the buses, it's any vehicle, even bikes that are on the roadways, your cars.
And there, it's good, and it's important to note that even with, you know, Lieutenant Arias, you know, his staff gets stretched to capacity. So whenever we work on a pilot, we have to work directly with Lieutenant to understand how much of his team he can carve out for these pilots.
Interesting. Very good.
Thank you.
Yes, and those are the challenges that we, as a state, face with staffing our personnel. But now with this sort of technology and this sort of partnership, we can evaluate, how can we be more successful, rather than just relying on enforcement or citations? We actually have measurable data that could say we are being successful in an aspect. But as you folks know, our process of getting funding for the state is a little bit more challenging. So it is, it is very helpful to do these pilots, it's very helpful to work with RTC and N.D. and do these programs to provide, to create the justification so that we submit through legislation what sort of funding specifically for Highway Patrol is needed to not only be involved with the program, to create that interoperable partnership, and to further develop our involvement in this sort of type of enforcement and public education.
Thank you. Any other comments? You know, that was an excellent presentation, and it really does speak to how collaborating and working together, we can get a whole lot better results for our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Board.
MJ?
And this concludes your CEO report, Madam Chair. So the next item is to receive the N.D. Director's report, and today Deputy Director Cole Mortenson is here to provide the update.
Good morning. I will do my best to cover for Director Swallow this morning. We were actually given a presentation on the Road to Zero last week, but the invitation said the Road to Zero results, so I was prepared to be disappointed, but I was actually pleasantly surprised. So, but as always, we begin with safety, and across the state, traffic fatalities are up 17% from the same time last year, and 109 people have lost their lives on Nevada roads so far in 2021. Nine counties saw increases in fatalities from the same time last year, including seven counties with jumps of 100% or more. The increase in Clark County was just over 26% from 53 fatalities last year to 67 the same time this year. Also here in Clark County, motorists fatalities increased, sorry, motorcyclists fatalities increased over 60%, and bicyclists fatalities jumped 200% with the loss of two bicyclists, up from zero this time last year. Another figure to note on Slide 24 is 24 unrestrained motorists who have died. That is up again this month. Buckling up is the single most effective thing you can do to protect yourself in a crash. It only takes seconds, and this one action can reduce the risk of serious injury or death in a crash by 50%. Once again, as we do all too often, we see the top causes of fatalities in Nevada were impairment and speeding. Our choices behind the wheel to buckle up or not, to drive buzz, to speed, can have fatal consequences. Last month, two people were killed in a crash on the east side of the valley near Cheyenne Avenue and Lamb Boulevard. An SUV driver was heading north on Lamb and crossed into oncoming traffic and struck the victim's white Nissan head-on. The two individuals in the Nissan died at the scene, and the SUV driver was taken to the hospital. He was then booked at Clark County Detention Center for two counts of DUI resulting in death. The state is reopening, suburban travel is nearly upon us, and many people are going back to work. This all adds up to more people on the road. Please do your part to protect yourselves and others. Drive sober, don't speed, and always buckle up. Next slide. We told you about a couple of public meetings last month, and we have another one to share today. N.D. will be holding a virtual public information meeting from May 25th to June 23rd, 2021, on the I-15 Flamingo to Sahara feasibility study. And I believe we're looking at making that a little bit easier to say and referring to it as the central corridor. During that time, the public will be able to access project details, materials, and proposed alternatives aimed at improving reliability and enhancing safety. We invite the public to submit comments and ask questions through the virtual site during the comment period. the comment period, again, the 25th through, May 25th through June 23rd, 2021. The virtual meeting site will launch on this project page beginning Tuesday. Visit dotdotnv.gov for more information. As mentioned earlier, May is Bike Month. NDOT continues to encourage alternate, alternate transportation modes to reduce congestion, support physical health and mental health, and to provide opportunity to teach the younger generation roadway safety tips. May is traditionally celebrated as National Bike Month and includes Bike to School Day. This month is supported by the League of American Bicyclists and the National Center's Safe Routes to School. Earlier this month, as part of Nevada Moves, an initiative started by NDOT as part of the Bike Month, many school districts held bike-to-school activities. For those who cannot attend an organized event, or who could not attend an organized event last week, or if you live in a county or school district that did not hold one, we encourage you to get out and bike or, get out on bike or foot anytime this month. Signs of spring in Nevada are all around, so go outside and get on a bike and soak in some nature, and please take part in, or part in Bike to Safety Month. One last slide here. In March, Director Swallow informed the board that on heels of Tracy Larkin-Thomason's departure, that Jeff LaRue would be serving in a temporary capacity as Acting Deputy Director of Operations and Maintenance. We are happy to announce that Jeff has accepted the appointment to now serve permanently. We told you a little bit about Jeff last year as he took the reins as Assistant Director, Director of Engineering, and again, in March, when he stepped into the void left by Tracy's retirement. Jeff's 25-year career with the department gives him a wide range of deep knowledge that will serve him well in this position, and Jeff has been proactive and an active contributor to our executive leadership team, and we're thrilled to have him on board officially. And that concludes the NDOT Director's Report.
Thank you very much for joining us today, Cole, and for that update, and we're grateful that you were able to join us this month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Next on the agenda is to approve the Consent Agenda. This consists of items five through 36, and can be taken in one motion.
If there's no item to be pulled, can I have a motion to accept the Consent Agenda?
Motion to accept the Consent Agenda.
We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay, and that motion carries.
Thank you, Chairwoman. The next three items are related to the RTC's annual budget and will be heard together. Item 37 is to receive a presentation on the tentative budget for the fiscal year 2022. The RTC's tentative budget for fiscal year 22 was filed on April 12th with the Department of Taxation and the Clark County Clerk's Office and has been on record at the RTC and the Clark County Clerk's Office since that time. The documents include the budget for all agency funds. Item 38 is to conduct, is to conduct a public hearing on the tentative budget. And then finally, item 39 is to adopt the final budget and direct staff to transmit the final budget as adopted to the Nevada Department of Taxation. And so RTC's fabulous CFO, Mark Trostall, will present to you.
Thank you, MJ. Madam Chair and members of the Commission, we'll start out this budget presentation by looking at our funding sources. And you can see by this pie chart here that our major funding sources are sales tax, fuel taxes, grants, and bond proceeds for the construction of roadway projects, and then transit fares. Our total budget for funding sources is $662 million for fiscal '22. On this next slide, you see that we're budgeting $231 million in sales tax for fiscal '22. That might seem to be really good, but if we projected that at just a 3.5% annual growth, we would have really been a lot further ahead at $246 million in fiscal '22. And if we take the three years of the pandemic and add those losses together, we lost about, we're projecting to lose about $53 million over those three years. And then if we look at this next slide, our sales tax that goes to the Streets and Highways Program and air quality, that totals $57.7 million, with the majority of that going to streets and highways for sales tax. And then we look at transit, the funding sources for transit. You can see that we're heavily reliant on sales tax. We're budgeting $173 million, and that makes up 53.4% of the budget. And then, of course, the big news this year is the operating grants of $37.7 million, which is mostly from stimulus money, the CARES, CHRISA, and ARP grants. And then we're also looking at capital grants coming in at $57.1 million, and we're budgeting our fares at $44.7 million. Then we look at fuel taxes. You see here, this is the motor vehicle fuel tax that we're budgeting $70.6 million for in fiscal '22. And then we did have Jet Aviation fuel tax that we received, and that's going away. So we're not budgeting that in fiscal '22. You can see last year, that was about, we're estimating fiscal '21 at about $3 million. Then we look at FRI, and you see what a great benefit that is to the fuel tax program and the road construction program. We're budgeting $86.4 million there. And then the extension of FRI at $28.7 million in our total fuel tax sources for fiscal '22 is budgeted $185.7 million. Then if we look at our fare revenue for transit, you can see that's really been hit hard during the pandemic. We're looking at a budget of $41.3 million in total for fiscal '22 after quite a dip in fiscal '21. And then we look at the general market, we're budgeting $32 million, and then our strip revenue at $9.3 million for fare revenue. Then we look at funding uses for the agency, and again, our total budget for funding uses is $662 million. You can see the capital outlay is the majority of that at about $291 million, and then contracted services, about $243 million. Then salaries and benefits, we're looking at that at about 6.9% of our total budget, the largest piece being capital outlay. Here you can see that we, for roadways, we're going to be spending about 74% of that capital outlay budget on roadways, which benefits all of our member jurisdictions with their symbols here at the bottom. And then transit makes up about 25% of the capital outlay budget at $73.4 million. And we look at the transit budget, that $73.4 million will be funded mostly by grant funding at $57.1 million. Then we look at transit funding uses, and you can see that our contracted services make up the majority of that at 67.2%. And then the capital outlay that we've discussed make up about 22.6%. And the big contract there is our fixed route contract cost. We're budgeting that at $124.2 million in fiscal '22. And then our paratransit contract, we're budgeting that at about $49 million next year. And that's my prepared comments. I'd be glad to answer. Any questions?
Thank you, Mark. This is a public hearing item, so I'll open the public hearing. Maren, have we gotten any written comments from the public?
We did not receive any public comments.
Thank you. And is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? We'll go ahead and close public comment. And Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Just to clarify, I know we're going to a microtransit model. Is that included in the regular or the paratransit, or it's sort of?
Yeah, that's mostly in the fixed route, the microtransit piece of it, and then, you know, paratransit has its own.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for the presentations, very thorough. And next step is then to go to the state. You submitted to the state and for approval. Okay, can I have a motion to adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2022 and direct staff to transmit the final budget as adopted to the State Department of Taxation?
I'll make the motion to adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2022 and direct the Department of Finance to transmit the final budget to the Department of Taxation.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay, and that motion carries.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Item 40 is to receive a presentation to conduct a public hearing and approve the collective bargaining extension agreement between the RTC and the SEIU Local 1107. RTC Deputy CEO Francis Julian will provide that presentation.
Good morning, Chairwoman and members of the board. Francis Julian for the record. Just as a summary for the great work we've done with the union, just wanted first of all, thank the union and all our employees for really amicable process that we had. So the highlights of the agreement is we have a five-year agreement with a one-year fiscal reopeners. COLA is set as 2.5% for next year, starting in July, and the, there's no merit for, for next year. So that's why there is fiscal reopeners for the possibility to reopen those clauses. And longevity was capped for all new employees, starting after the 1st of June, to only one year instead of being each year after five years. And that is the sum of the changes that were done to the CBA.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the board? And I believe this is a public hearing item as well, so I need to open the public comment period. Maren, did we receive any written comments?
We did not receive any written comments.
Thank you. And is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment, and then we need a motion to adopt the agreement between the RTC and the SEIU Local 1107.
I'll make the motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement with SEIU Local 1107.
We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay, and that motion carries.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Item 41 is our standing legal item, and there are no matters to bring before the board at this time. So we'll move on to the next item, which is item 42, and that is your final citizens' participation period.
Thank you. And this is the second time set aside for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the board, now is your opportunity. Please come forward to the microphone to provide your comments and state your name for the record. Do we have any comments? Seeing none, do we, Maren, do we have any written comments?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, and we have two. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Robyn Kincaid, and I am speaking today as a parent of a young adult with disabilities that is also a paratransit customer. My daughter Kayla lives in the service area and frequently uses paratransit services. We have always lived in the service area, but that does not help her gain access to essential services because of the inlets and restrictions within the current service area. We appreciate the efforts being made to correct some of the inlets and reconfigure the service area. We are looking forward to seeing this implemented and are hopeful that this is the first step to helping, toward helping persons with disabilities access essential services. Although my daughter did receive some instruction in understanding her text notifications at our military time, it is still a difficult for her and requires her to locate her sheet to convert to AM PM time. Why are persons with disabilities singled out to receive communication in this format? Other notifications and materials to persons without disabilities do not have to complete this conversion. Could someone on the Commission obtain an explanation for this requirement? Please provide some information regarding the replacement RTC RideCheck website system, which has been, which has in the past provided a real-time prediction of when the bus will arrive. RTC changed to MV over 18 months ago, and that system still has not been activated to inform the rider and their families of the bus arrival status. Why should the public have to continue to wait for a service that they were receiving from the prior contractor? Moving forward, please review your process to accept public comments from the community. The public must have options such as the ability to phone in testimony, participate through a virtual platform, email without artificial deadlines, and if they are comfortable, be able to present public comment in person. Previous RTC meetings, meetings agendas have contained open meeting law violations by insisting that the public submit testimony by 5:00 PM deadline on the day before the meeting. Please consult with your legal staff regarding the need to have a variety of public comment options and review recently published open meeting law violations from the Nevada Attorney General's Office. As Commission members, I urge you to ask RTC staff questions and work with the community members to resolve issues and try to understand that persons with disabilities deserve access to transportation services that meet their needs. And your second one is, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Stephanie Versnick. I am testifying before you for the 39th time. I am a mom speaking on behalf of my son, Christian, who does not drive due to his autism. I have been testifying each month consistently for over three years, asking this Commission to expand the service area in this community. Recently, I received a call from Mr. Francis Julian informing me that as of August 8th, the service area for paratransit riders will be expanded, meaning my address will be in the service area. After three years of testifying for this service, my son will now have transportation. I told Mr. Julian that this was great news, however, I would continue to testify until the August 8th. As I have stated many times throughout the years, transportation is an essential service to many people in this community. It is a service that connects the essence of independence, which links people to living a full and productive life. People are more connected to the outside world. They can go grocery shopping, work, or go out with friends independently when they have transportation. Having transportation gives my son more of a sense of independence. RTC can bring him home after work, and he does not have to wait for me to pick him up at the library and drive him home. As we slowly begin to get back to a normal but different way of life for more people will be accessing transportation. By expanding the service area, it is allowing many more people different opportunities that they never had before. Access to transportation can give people the opportunity to find a job and join the workforce instead of staying home due to not having transportation. People can go out and do things and be part of their community. Life is difficult when you must always depend on someone to drive you to every place you need to go. Transportation improves the quality of life for many people. Access to transportation allows people with disabilities important opportunities in education, employment, healthcare, housing, and participation in community and social relationships in life. It has taken over three years to get this accomplished. In my opinion, expanding the service area should have happened a long time ago. However, that is beside the point. I applaud the RTC Commissioners for finally expanding the service area and putting the needs of this community as their number one priority. And that concludes your written public comments.
Thank you very much, Maren. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close this meeting. This meeting's adjourned. Or did you have something? Happy birthday.